Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the board meeting, Jefferson County Health Department Board of Trustees. As usual, this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube, so that anyone would like to watch can see it. So, if your person forward likes to call me to order. We have a little call, please.
Mr. Deal.
Here.
Dr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Prater.
Here.
Mr. Pig.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Okay, so all the members are present, we have four. Dr. Henry, June 30th, Department's position.
Mission JCHD will champion positive health outcomes and behaviors through innovative programs and community engagement. Our vision is advancing the health and safety of Jefferson County.
Thank you. So, all board members should have gotten a copy of the proposed agenda. Motion to approve that. Make sure motion second. It's a motion. Approve this truth. Sorry, I'm sorry. All in favor of approving the agenda written, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm not in favor. Sorry, against. Several other things to approve here. First is the minutes of the April 28th this year for the meeting. All the members are present at that meeting. Sorry. Yeah, discussion. And all in favor of approving those eight minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
That are approved. Next is approval of the May 2022 expenditures. Now we have for those
Second.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to address the Lewis Bruce's, the start in CPRP, which is the supplemental sperm for attorney fees, and make it a point to state on record that this time last year, the year before she took her position, we were we were using the attorney at the meetings and for some advice there. And I think our personally very well, the attorney fees were probably maybe fifteen hundred or less, maybe two thousand or less. And now we're at nine thousand and a half, the average. I think it's excessive, but I think that there should be raised that this former to possibly speak to her advice. The trust rolling states, I'm not a department, all this. In particular, we can ask right now, and I did ask last month for an itemized, I don't know if you get it. I told I had to come up here personally to see it, which doesn't seem fair, so I didn't, I should get that copy of that. But anyway, it says that on May the 23rd, general counseling was three point seven hours. Thousand and eighteen dollars, so May 23rd was about the building, less than an hour, one hundred sixty-eight dollars. Five twenty-three was the Department of Health and Consumer Services court case for three hours at eight hundred and forty dollars. Five twenty-three, same day, another twelve hours, or thirteen hours rather, for sunshine. Doing sunshine things, well, I first sent the sunshine request to different departments before, that doesn't have to go before the attorney. You just provide what people ask, or you don't need to contact first to tell them about it, just provide what they asked for, transparent. So that forty-two hundred dollars, in my opinion, is excessive and doesn't need to be there. Five twenty-three, labor and employment, nine twenty-eight hours. I have no idea what it is, but I'm sure that the director needed to talk to her about things, et cetera. But I can see right there, forty-two hundred and eight forty would be not there at all if we want to involve in the DHSS court case. I think as important, we should consider a resolution to back out of there and let someone else come and handle that themselves and save ourselves some money there. I think that the board of governance issues and sunshine requests, I think that they could just you know, provide the information people ask before the sunshine request, that would be a lot less excessive in that area too. So that's probably feel about it.
Mr. Dale Matt.
Do you mind if I address a couple of those points? So, the DHSS case, I am aware of your Facebook post, Miss Davis, and I know that you feel that you have a process to champion or write down a little piece or a pause because COVID right now, that needs to be spoken about. I understand that, I don't think we're in a fashion. However, whenever you put information out to the public about, you said that we are involved in litigation with the Attorney General. If that's a sorry concept, I think it's important for the public to understand that we're actually, at least technically, on the same side as the Attorney General, who is supposed to be representing DHSS, who is one of the movie parties along with us to do with that case law. Okay, so we're not going up against the Attorney General, his obligation to represent his client, and we are actually on the same side of litigation. So, please make sure we are keeping information up to the public that that piece of litigation cases, you're being accurate and that you're being honest about it. Second of all, please understand that we have really taken a backseat enough to go through this litigation. The attorneys for St. Louis County and Jackson County are the other ones that are doing heavy load down that case. And if I was, if I was doing heavy load down that case, it would be a lot more expensive. I shouldn't think it was St. Louis County as a priority of these for lifting load water on that.
What's it gonna, but it's not really gonna do.
Man, I really, I didn't.
And honestly, at the end of that, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't interrupt you. I did interrupt you, because I appreciate you, you know, it's terrible. Oh, Ms. Davis, you know, we are, we are, we have an interest in protecting that case and we're protecting it, we're not.
I'm sure very well, I think I went to it, but that's not, that's just.
And also, I'm going to add to Ms. Davis, that the other case in which we're involved were defendants. So, we're not the ones that chose to file that lawsuit. The individuals who chose to file that lawsuit, which by the way, should be moot at this point because all of the issues in it are dead. It's continuing because the two individuals that are involved in that case are utilizing it as a public platform for our public office. I understand that too, I mean, it's part of the way that things roll sometimes. But unfortunately, this is the position, we have to protect ourselves and defend ourselves. We don't decide if we have a claim to that case, whether or not a case gets dropped. Believe me, I'm attempting to get that case dropped, I have a motion dismissed on file. It's not been heard yet because the party for the other side has asked for a stand on that matter. So, believe me, I'm really, I can't get rid of that case, we can't pay more attention on that case. If you have any questions about those cases, I'm happy to talk to you about them.
I think that, you know, making comments about whoever those two people are and that they're doing it for political organization. It happens to you that you are also running for office. And I know that there is no such thing as that. Not anything you can prove, the inclusion or objections like that.
What's that, the victims here, comments are noted.
Mr. Dale Matt, make a comment.
I would just like to see the beast come down, Kelly, if you can do anything about that.
Ms. Davis, if you allow me, floor. Thank you. The court cases, as Ms. Coleman has mentioned, had paused us eight hundred and forty dollars. Of that four thousand two hundred and eighty-four dollars that you were mentioning regarding board governance and sunshine, sunshine was only two point four hours of that review. That twelve point nine hours were related to board governance issues, and I can, Ms. Davis.
What kind of board governance, just.
I've personally seen that invoice and nine of the thirteen entries are related to communications with you.
I haven't even talked to anyone in the Health Department over a month.
Mr. Chair, this is the right form.
So, what, I'm sorry.
Ms. Davis.
You know.
You've been invited, you've been invited to look.
You're on a witch hunt for me, and that's pressing, you're not, all the debtsters owe our money needlessly.
You've been invited, you've been invited to look at those, you can hear every question.
It's expensive and.
Let your opinions.
I would like to see our director use her time to, to, like what our mission says, to work on the health of our community.
It's unfair to say that.
Or go after a board member.
I'd like to see our board member understand what.
Can I, I'd like to call motion. Call, call both, please. Any others standing up? So, all in favor of approving expenditures, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
People of the May 2022 electronic payments. Actual amount for those, that I have, is four hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Make sure motion, second. You're not all favor of approving those electronic payments, please say aye.
Aye.
And our last approval is preapproval of the July 2022 electronic payments, the estimated amount for those six hundred and five thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. So. Hey, all in favor of approving those electronic estimated payments, please say aye.
Aye.
Good afternoon. I'm going to mention the Health Network and the Environmental Report. So, the first piece I want to note is in environmental on page two, our food service activities. On May 20th, we did have a recall of, you know, bother that most of you are aware of, you saw that out on our socials and on our Facebook. I do want to add that ours food inspectors did a tremendous effort and actually went and visited a hundred and fifty-six facilities to make sure that they were taking appropriate precautions, that food was removed as needed and providing education. So I think that was a very fast response, we just wanted to make a note that they did a fantastic job under tremendous time crunch.
I'd say, Jack, it's probably something people don't know, is that we do follow up on issues and make sure that infected items are not still for sale. This is a big effort at times. But I also think people should, they check their own items at home, so that if they have a lot of infected items, take it back to where it was purchased.
And.
We do try to make sure nobody is buying anything that we call.
Is that, do you go to like schools and childcare centers and make sure they're not using it, or is this just for sale?
I think it'd be, probably on this one, they went to most many of the retail stores. Then during the regular inspections, they'll try to, there's no way they can get to every facility. They try to look at the retail facilities first.
And they have great relationships with the schools and the restaurants that they work with, a lot of time, I'll let them know. Yeah, and they have great communication, where a lot of times we can see that happen, we get the facilities, we call and ask, we expect them to be close relationship with questions. If anyone here, anyone in the public has questions, you can go to the US Food and Drug Administration or FDAS site. They've got great information regarding that particular recall, and anyone who does not have internet can also call the one eight hundred eight eight nine nine zero. For Health Network, under the Health Education section, these, these individuals that go into our schools had a great year. Wanted to note that since January of 2022, they have done fifty-seven presentations in all of private and public, and that included presenting for six thousand and forty-two students. So I think that shows in just that small amount of time, the impact that they made putting that face to face in their actual students. And topics included dental health, nutrition, bike safety, sun safety, stress management, healthy habits, fast food, water safety, expressive feeling, and breathing with depth. So, just wanted to make note that they did an incredible job this school year, and made a really big impact. Any questions on anything you saw on their Health Network board? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Melissa will not have a report today, she's out. So, her reports are contained within the board packet, and now we'll let Brian send on the new public health app, which is exciting. Brianna, I'm trying to get on here right now, I scanned this, and it's kind of locked up. So, do you have an Android or an app?
Android.
So that's going to be part of my thing, it's still waiting to get into Google Play Store.
I know, that's part of my disclaimer here. So, we're live in the Apple Store, but Google is, I guess, when they're due diligence, I'll have to check. So, we're not quite there yet, but I can go ahead and just kind of talk briefly about some of the stuff that you have, the not the flyer in front of you, but you also have our agency pamphlet, which is the booklet, yes, oh, are they? So, that's one of our newer educational pieces that we have, it's kind of the meat potatoes one, so I wanted to get you guys that one. We do have rat cards for independent programs, so dental and many clinical services, community outreach, et cetera, but this one is really kind of the end all be all, it lists all of our services. So, I wanted to make sure that you guys all had a copy of that, that way, if you're out and about, like anybody else who is associated with the Health Department, and someone asks you a random question, and you're like, uh, I don't know, you have the answers, they're right there. Those are our basic services that we provide. You'll also be able to provide information on, who else will be able to get that information from the app as well? Is it not? No, it's not you, it's super.
There it is.
Finicky. I know, the mouse is super weird too, right? Okay. All right, so we're going to make sure that this goes really, so, I'm coming to JCHD app, like I said, it's on the Apple Store, and I see all of you on your phones right now, so I'm hoping that means you're downloading the app. I tried, yay, yeah, I know, so I'm the same way, I have an Android as well, and I'm like, come on.
Can I get it, I can get it on my Apple computer or on my Mac?
Well, so it's a, it's a mobile app, so it's just available for mobile devices, so I'm really hoping that by the end of this week, it'll be in the Google Store, and believe me, once it is, I will send this to the Hilltop, so you will know. No, we'll have that there. But we can go ahead and advance forward, we can go through, I went ahead and put a little refresher on here as to why we got an app. So, we talked about this back in January, February, I believe, we brought it to the board. And so just kind of a reminder of why we decided that this would be a good opportunity for the agency and for the campaign. We have the ability to reach more residents because most residents have a smartphone. Not all residents follow social media, not everyone on social media follows us, however, most people have a smartphone, so this gives us the opportunity to be in the hands of more individuals that we serve. The app also provides push notifications for critical information updates. So, for example, if we have a oil-water advisory or something specific with any kind of public health emergency, we can push that out to individuals and they can get that in real time, rather than waiting for them to maybe find it on their Facebook when they, you know, scroll before that. It improves our client and resident engagement through messaging, so we are able to provide the information and then get feedback from the community, they are able to message us through this app, which is something that I'll demonstrate. It has easier promotion for programs and services, again, so we can reach more of our targeted audience. Most people have a cell phone. There are two hundred, I think it's now two hundred and twenty-six thousand residents in Jefferson County, we have twenty thousand followers, probably about twenty-two thousand across all of our social media. It is a tiny percentage of our county, and we serve everyone, not just the ones who follow us on Facebook. So we want to make sure that we're getting the say heads of everyone, and excuse me, it also provides the users with easy access to our information, our programs and services at their fingertips. Yes, we have a website, technology changes, everything changes. An app is the newest kind of way to get in the hands of the folks that we're trying to reach, it has all of the information similar to our website, and then it does a lot more. I do want to add the disclaimer, by adding the app one, we are not eliminating our other channels of communication with the community. We'll still have our social media app, we still have our website, print marketing, et cetera. This is just another tool in the toolbox, and it's kind of my new favorite tool in the toolbox. So, we can go ahead and switch to the next slide. So, what can it do? So, left to us. So, when you download it, this is the main screen, so if you, if you click the slide, it should, it's going to show us a video here. So, when you click it, and pull it up here, this is what our main screen looks like, it has the locations information and the ability to send a message. So, when you click on locations, it'll have all three of our locations on there, you click one of those, and it'll give you the automatic, you can pull directions up through your phone, you can automatically call as well. When it backs out, it's going to take you to the send a message option. So, this is the second thing that you can do here. This is an ability for the community to get touch with us. They have a question, if they have a concern, they don't have a social media account, they don't want to message us through Facebook, whatever the case is, they can go through that. We do require a name, and then obviously the subject of the message is required. If individuals just want to reach out and say, hey, we want to make you aware of this, that's all that they need to play. If they would like us to follow up with them, and it says this up at the top. If they want us to follow up with them, they need to either provide an email or a phone number, so we have way to contact them. What that does is it automatically sends a message to the communications team here, Tris and I, Super Steady, and we'll get that message, and then we'll be able to either answer your question, or we'll go find the people that know the answer, and then get back to you, or have someone in the department follow up with you, if you have provided an email or a phone number to be contacted. So, are there any questions about those two sections and so forth? The second section is the how do I? So, this is our frequently asked questions section, I'm pretty excited about this one too. Literally lists, how do I apply for birth certificate, how do I apply for death certificate, how do I request a car seat? These are the main questions that we get. This might cut down on the phone calls that we have, but also provide information when we're not here. If it's, you know, four o'clock on a Saturday, and you've got to figure out how do I request a car seat, pull up the app, it'll be right here, you can fill out the form right through the app, and then someone will call you in the business for that particular, the car seat form. Someone will call you within the next business day and get you set up for an appointment. So, that's the how do I section. And those can also be updated, so if there's something that we start getting a question on a lot, we can always add more to this app. The next section is our services section. Think of the video, there it is. So, when you click on services, it lists all the things that we do, very similar to the website. You can look at administrative, there's where birth and death certificates are, you can click those green buttons, and it'll take you out to the form, which can be refilled for a birth certificate, death certificate, et cetera. When you click on some of the things in our nursing section, it will show you the different services that we provide, but then also list out the tests. So, for example, if you know there's a certain test that your doctor's wanting, you can check to see if the Health Department provides it. We don't have prices on there because those vary based on insurance, sliding scale, and then as well as brand funding, but we do list all of the things that we provide there. Community health, the same thing, you can find information about car seats, if you click the bike helmets, or Project Lifesaver, you choose Project Lifesaver form, it'll take you right out, you can fill it out there, again, someone will call you within one business day and get you taken care of, get your information to you. So, this is the one for the vector control program, so I was just kind of slow showing you, you click that one and say, hey, we've got a real mosquito problem, or I'm not, you can find it right there in the app, and it will take you to the form. And you can fill it out, and again, Scott, most likely, will be the person that's in touch with you. Any questions on services?
Yes, it mentions crisis text line, say teenagers are having a crisis of some sort, you know, there's the drugs they're doing and things, and somebody knows about the Health Department, is there a way to click on something, and they literally are spoken to about what's going on?
Yes.
Try to help them.
Yes, and I'm going to get there, so go ahead and ask, so we're going to move on to that one. I don't know if it's the next slide or the slide after. I've only done this a hundred and eighty times. Okay, so clinics and events, but see that little phone in the middle that says hotlines, we're going to get to that session, that's one you're asking about. So, clinics and events is a color-coded, like an event calendar, so basically, everything that we provide, family clinic, family planning, immunizations, where the dental van is, where the senior dental van is, where the wellness van is, that will all be on here, community events that we're attending, where you can get bike helmets or car seats, that will all be on here. You can choose the events, it'll give you a description of everything that's happening, it'll save it to your calendar if you want it to. It will also allow you to pull up the directions to the location, so let's say we're at a community event, you want a bike helmet, you're out, let's pull up, grab it. And you can also make calls directly from that, like it'll automatically pull up the number as well. So, right now, I have the wellness fans one in there, because I was just kind of playing around with it, but by July, I'll have all of our clinics played out there, so if you know your kiddo needs actual immunizations, you can take a look at the clinic events and say, okay, well, I know that this week in July, we are on vacation, this week I'm here, does the Health Department have a clinic? Yes, we do, give us a call, we're going to get you settled. So, that's the clinics and events. The also, the other good thing about this too, is that you can save it to your calendar, and then you can also share it with other people. So, if you know, like your kid's soccer coach or something, they need their kids, and you guys, I don't know why you would know that, but let's just say you do. You can send it to them as well, so that's really part of it. We can go ahead and move on. So, then the next part is the social media and the hotline. So, the social media is just integrated with our Facebook and our Twitter feeds, so what we post on Facebook and Twitter will automatically pop up. It's the first time, so it took a second to load, so you'll be able to see those right there. It also, over the top, has links to our other social media accounts, so that if you wanted to find our Instagram or YouTube, you could click those, they would take you out to those. We'll say it wants to open Instagram, it'll take you to our account there. We're currently working on getting our TikTok on there, but they're still working on that integration. And this is the hotline section, so this is what you were asking about, Ms. Davis. This is a list of all of the major hotlines, we can always add more. We've got poison control, child abuse hotline, towards the top, we have the suicide prevention line, we have the crisis text line, there is the domestic violence hotline, those are the same thing, you click it and immediately gives you access. Most of those hotlines are twenty-four hours. Now, I will say that these are not our hotlines, these are the national hotlines or whatever, but these are, that is a key for me. Again, one of the things that I was mentioning earlier is, even if you are, if you are a Jefferson County resident, we serve you as the Health Department, even if you never entered any of our clinics, if we never see you for dental, we never see you for immunizations, we still serve you, and this is an opportunity, because now you have this in your pocket as an easy place to find what you need. The next part, I've talked about for a hot minute, it's my favorite. This is the resource map, so it is, my, right, it is color-coded by type of resource. So, what it's going to do is list all of the resources that are available to our citizens, not just what the Health Department provides. Anybody and everybody in the community that has something that can benefit our residents, it's going in here. So, for example, you can drop a pin in and say, hey, I'm in the Hillsboro, whoops, this is where I kill, so you need to learn my demo. You can drop a pin down and say, hey, this is where I'm at, I want to see what resources are close to me, and as you zoom in or you pinch, it'll show you. You can also choose the map legend, everything is colored with it. So, clothing assistance, food pantries, healthcare agencies, medical drop boxes, physical activity, social service agencies, utility and grants, yeah. It's awesome, and this is me and all of that, I just. It's awesome. And this is me and all of that. I just filled out a handful. There's way more that could be added. So then you can also filter. So you can say, look, I am just looking for food pantries. You're a caseworker, you have a client who needs help. They need to find food. Perfect. Let's put this in. Let's find the food pantries that are closest to where my client is at or where my client can get to. If you're not a map person and the dots on the map uh, are applicable for you, because there's some people that are like, I don't, I can't see the, the map. Uh, it also comes in a list. When you click that place, you get all of the information. So again, it have the address, it'll take you out the directions. It gives you the description of the services that they provide or who they serve. You can also make a call straight from there. And then it also provides a link out to the website if they provide one. Uh, so some of them, for example, like the food pantries, they only operate on surface. So we'll have that information in there. Or utility and rent assistance, they will only be able to help the individuals that are within certain segments. So we'll make that go into there too. Uh, just as a side note, for those who are watching or will potentially watch, if you are a community agency and do not serve cell phone this resource map, uh, please download the app and send us a message. And we'll get you at it because this is by no means the full list. This is not one hundred percent done. Uh, there's always room to add more. There's probably places out there that I have it for those that provide services to that public community. Right?
Anything on that phone call that's, or people that are living in a car when they're just kind of just teenagers?
So as far as any of those resources that are filling us the same food pantries, uh, social service agencies, I think will probably be more associated with that because they'll be able to work through like housing applications or residential facilities and things like that more specifically. Uh, but there's not like a specific group that's homeless resources. I feel like for the most part, all of that would be utilized. It's kind of just what they look for at the same time. But that is a great question because this is one thing that we do plan to push out when we go to project homeless connects and things like that. Not only for the residents who may be seeking those services, project homeless connect. Oh, it's a community project that a lot of different agencies get started on to pull together resources and services for our homeless population. I, you know, that's a great question. I'm not sure. I know that we have it scheduled again this year and I'm sure at some point someone will be able to mention that.
College, was that what you're talking about, the big thing at the college?
They might have something to do with it. I know they've done this in health lodge one year. Uh, yeah, so some projects, what? Project homeless connect. Yep. So in addition to being able to help those residents, theoretically, the people who are there, foster care case managers, our case managers, parole officers, whatever the case, they can also reference this app to get to their clients and help them find resources. They pull out of the pocket, say, hey, here's what I can find for you. Here's what we got. Uh, I'm taking a lot of time on this section. I apologize. Does anyone have any questions?
Home and services have always been an issue here in the county. Historically, what they've been done, uh, people that searched and a lot of it time to build communities and provide to people or places to stay.
So yeah, so we do have that.
There aren't any here on this facility.
Right. And so some of the agencies that are listed on here are outside of Jefferson County. So some of them may be more difficult if folks, you know, don't have transportation. But we still wanted to provide that as an option. Um, and there is a utility and rent assistance base where it's a lot of usually religious organizations that can provide uh, financial assistance or whatnot to help cover utility bills and housing and things like that. And again, there's probably more out there that I don't have on here, so highly encourage individuals to let me know if there's any else.
I was just going to say, we, our, our health education group has been very involved in working with several of the other agencies in the county, um, for planning for homeless events. Just in general to, to go out to known encampments and to assist individuals who's connected with multiple resources.
That's the middle break. Okay, so we can go ahead and move forward then. Uh, the next piece is communications and health topics. So the communication section is where, they're both blog style reading, but this is where we'll have our press releases. Uh, so you can pull it up right there like you would be able to on our websites. It will come up. These can be pushed as a notification if it's, especially if it's something of high importance. Uh, we can definitely push that out as a notification. And then the health topics is more casual reading. It's uh, the blog post. So this is the different health information that we work on. Our community health team is really great. Tristan's really great about writing these blog posts as well and pushing this information out. So it's just kind of fun and helpful, but also the thing I like about it is when you click that little button up there, you can share it. Caitlin, you're one of my favorite people. Isn't that fun that you're one of them? But you can share it through your chats, Instagram, and you can share it through text messages. So if you read something that says, how do you get your kids involved in meal planning? You can send it to your husband and be like, hey, get on it. This is what we're doing. So just a fun fact. And um, okay, we can keep moving. And then the last section is my goals. This is one of the newer sections that the company is building out. So it's uh, it's in the little stages sort of speak. We're mostly going to be utilizing it with our dietitian. That's kind of how we're testing it out. So folks can choose a bowl, um, reduce their A1C, lose weight, lower the blood pressure, drink more water. They can choose what that goal is that they work on. They can choose the date that they want to have that accomplished by. So maybe their next appointment, Megan, our dietitian. And they can keep up with their progress. So I haven't done uh, in progress or I have completed. And then they can also take notes down there and say, you know, I have water this day or I told you I didn't want water, but I should have. That's not a good one.
So, so the number percent of our community, like they have children, they're obese. And literally, like those are just some free children, they could come to the program and have, speak to the dietitian.
Yeah, Megan is, Megan is fabulous and it is a bust. So absolutely. And there is a way in the app, if you go to services and you click nutrition, you can click the little button and it'll say, schedule an appointment with Megan. You click that and within a business day, she'll probably or ordering, however you got to. That was the last section there, I think. That was all I had on this card. So, do you have any questions? Yes, sir.
How's the uh, my goals data stored that it's accessed to?
Great question. So that lives on their phone and it sends a message to the dietitian if we would like it to. So that is a conversation that that patient will have with Megan. And Megan's uh, still got to be trained on that first. We don't, don't make any. Megan, if you're watching, sorry. We'll be there. So yeah, this is live in the Apple stores. If you have an Apple device, you can, and she will download this uh, to all the friends and their friends. It will be in the Google store very soon. Uh, and we will definitely begin marketing it.
Since there, since there are links that we can put into our browser and go into this.
Okay, so great question. Great question. Uh, to get to the app, the app is just the it's like the software on your phone, but the information technically also lives on our website. It's not, it doesn't look exactly like the app. But a lot of this information has, yes, it's already on our website. Uh, when you go into either the App Store or the Google Play Store, you just type in Jefferson County Health Department. You're going to find us because it's going to have our logo. There are a lot of Jefferson County health departments out there.
There are a lot of them.
Yeah. But ours is usually going to pop up the first one because it's location-based, but it's going to have our logo too. So you'll know that that one's there. Also, any of the marketing material that we're pushing out, such as the flyer we have, has the cool little QR standard. So if somebody just opens their camera, scans that, it will take them to the appropriate Google or Apple store. And they click download. Right now, if you did take it to the Google store, like you said, I say this is going to say, you don't know what you're talking about there. It's not quite there. Does anyone have any questions? I know I talk to you really fast, but I also know.
You'll be able to see how many people have been downloading it and how many people are utilizing it. So it'd be kind of neat if we said, fit that down.
That will be definitely, that will definitely be part of our analytic report that's in your board, uh, in your board packets. We'll add that to our communications, uh, our communications department. In addition to just the general social media stuff.
We've got a reference to the high schools. We can do like a little thing for them.
That's a, so we definitely know that anywhere, anywhere anyone goes, a lot of my coworkers are going to be saying, I'm going to push this on everyone. I'm getting business cards, we're getting amounts of folks. So anywhere we go for like the next year, we're going to be pushing this. But I mean, as a presentation or something, that is helpful. Any other questions?
More download, it might quite crush.
Thank you. We have a download. I know we have two. I know. As soon as, as soon as it comes out, I will send that press release and I'll make sure it goes out to the board as well. So you'll get that email.
One huge goal we've had forever is to make more people aware of all services that we provide or that, that at least even are available. And I know we had a discussion last time about services at all of the surrounding health departments. We get, we get table in our packet. Be able to show that.
We have that. Okay, this one is the, the locations. I don't know. I didn't that submit.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know that one. But here's the fun fact, but I forgot to mention, um, we have been chosen by the Missouri State Health Association for their health conference in September to present this through the state. Who's excited? Sorry, we're the first health department to help. So I want to say yes. And when I was searching, I found Butler County, but it hasn't been updated in a little bit, so I'm not entirely sure if like their contract lasts or maybe just COVID. Uh, I'm not entirely sure, but I'd love to take credit for that, but I don't really see that. So we're definitely one of the top.
What about, what about the search?
I'm sorry.
What about misreaching? Oh, first misreaching, the next chance.
Okay, there you go. I like what he says. It checks.
If you can't tell by her enthusiasm and excitement, this has been a very first and we are.
I like ran down Kelly's office about seven months ago. I was like, what are you thinking about this?
You're going to have some jokes before.
I mean, when you send that, um, maybe the newspaper, you put the QR code in the newspaper.
Yeah, so we definitely plan to run the ad, um, with the QR code for probably several weeks. Kate and Mary and I actually talked about that plan. Making sure that folks have that, we'll push it out on socials.
Do you want to wait till?
We'll have it on our website.
You want to wait till your Google's.
I do. I want to wait because of exactly what happened in this Davis. I don't want people to be like, this isn't working for me. Uh, so I literally am just checking my phone, waiting for Google to say, you're clear, but I haven't gotten it yet. So, but yes, as soon as I get that, we'll be good.
Yeah, we don't want to frustrate.
That's, yeah, that's part of it. I want people to like it. I don't want people to be frustrated. So I'm super excited about it, if you cannot tell. And I totally agree with you. This is, this is the way that we serve our residents that we never physically do. Because that resource map, the hotline stat, just having the information about how to get your kid involved in grocery shopping. I mean, I don't have children, but like, I understand that that's a thing.
Dietitian is good.
Yes, exactly. Just all of the pieces in there, it's access in your pocket. And now basically, one, most people have a smartphone and are we not all glued to it? And a lot of us are fully equipped. I mean, so it's just, it's being where the people are and that is public health. Meeting people where they are at. They're on their phone. As sad as sometimes that may seem, it's a society for ourselves. Can't beat them, Jordan. Let's get them. So um, if there's any other questions that you ever have, you can always contact me. Uh, I'm happy to get to those. And I really do appreciate you pushing this app to all your friends and family. Donut stickers for people who forget the most. I love stickers. See, every good student, education, right? I was a teacher. We got this.
After so many stickers, you can get a cardboard cookie.
I will see what I can do. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I've had so much time. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. Nice job. Okay, uh, next thing. So the next thing that is on the list, or actually underneath the director's report that I'd like to hit is we have had a question brought up at our last board meeting. And I'm not sure. You can email the chart. Okay. Do you mind pulling up the, the chart?
Yes, we want that to seem fairly correct.
Yeah. Just so there, or do you want it to be broadcast?
Whatever seems easiest.
So, uh, the one thing that was brought up, if you look at the last two pages of your board packet, uh, we had put together information. Uh, Ms. Davis had asked at the last board meeting about uh, checking with other health departments and seeing kind of what, what resources are available, what days are open, hours, uh, services types are provided. And so this chart on the back offers some information, or that, Brian, we'll be pulling up moment two, but for those of you who have the packet. Um, we are, it has our, the details, including the days they, that they are open, the times they're open, number of locations, the services they provide, whether they're open for lunch or not, the population they serve, that kind of thing. So, uh, a couple of things that I wanted to point out that, um, as we always strive to ensure that our services are available to the public when the public needs them and are available to the community. And so as Brian said, our push has really been to find ways to be accessible at all, or to all residents, pardon me, I'm getting tongue tied today. Um, regardless of the access issues. And so uh, our clinic office locations for a brick and mortar are open Monday through Thursday, eight to five thirty PM, and we're still open for lunch. Uh, we have three clinic locations that are operating, but then as well, we have our mobile wellness van, our two uh, dental vans, which one serves older adults and one serves the uh, youth population. And then we have three additional vaccination and testing.
So, so can we, uh, are, are, is anything open on Friday at all?
Ms. Davis, actually, we have staff who work on Friday.
Involving or a van that people can get to?
It depends on the day. It depends on the day. So we do do presentations and we do uh, services with the wellness van and some of our other services on Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays. Depends on what the community request has been. But in looking at this, the one thing that I'm really proud of our staff to be able to show is that serving nine locations, we have a population of two hundred and twenty-four thousand. We were open eight to five thirty, which is the latest time open of any of the, all of the metro areas that were uh, checked into. And of the fifteen services that were surveyed, we provide thirteen of fifteen. When you look at uh, other departments within our area, including St. Louis County, uh, they have Monday through Friday hours. They only have three locations. Maybe, and they provide nine, not only, it's a lot, but nine services of the fifteen. Um, we provided, if you look at St. Charles County, which has a similar population to us, they have one location, they're open eight to five PM. They close for lunch, or no, sorry, they are open for lunch. Um, they provide nine of the fifteen services. But as you look through the other departments across the area, uh, you will notice that we have comparable hours, comparable days. We provide more services and more opportunities because six of our locations are mobile and are able to be around the county, providing services at times and locations that are convenient to our public. The other thing that I wanted to note is that of the fifteen services that are listed on here, there are additionally three services. The Jefferson County Health Department, uh, insurers are accessible to our community that are not provided by us, but are provided by partnership in our locations, which include the WIC services, mental health and behavioral health counseling and speech therapy are all provided through our offices, uh, through partnerships with uh, some of our community partners. So I just think that it, uh, and going back and looking at how we are approaching our community, the types of services that we're trying to provide. You can see on each of these slides, uh, Jefferson County Health Partners at the top. And I want to say uh, thank you to our OSAs who put this together. They made all the phone calls, do you think it was like seven, seven and a half hours to get through all of these?
Just, you know, we started not working on Friday during the COVID thing. So why are we still not working on Friday?
Because we cannot uh, staff this, the offices or all three offices.
We're not open on Friday. The people that would normally be working on Friday were hourly employees.
Are hourly employees.
And they're not being paid on Friday?
They are paid for a thirty-six hour work week now. They work nine and a half hour days. They receive a half hour.
Nine comes forward, they're just sitting. We're getting off on Friday.
Yes. Now, the one thing that I do want to notice, I'm sorry, sir.
I thought we were running towards where they were actually.
Correct. So the one thing that I do want to note is that uh, we have a large group of exempt employees. Those exempt employees are working the majority of the time, more than forty hours per week. Uh, they work the evenings, they work weekends, they work Fridays. Uh, what you're talking about, when you say we're closed on Fridays, the clinical services are not offered on Fridays in the building locations. So one thing I want to say is again, our clinical services can be uh, accessed depending on the availability and the scheduling for our wellness vans and our dental vans. But then as well, on, on Fridays, it's typically worked by our environmental group, our, our health education group. Uh, and many of our administrators.
I'll give you an example. On a Friday, a caterer needs to have an event like, like a booth at a fair. And they need, they need a, a temporary permit. They can't get one.
No, but that, again, we're open Monday through Friday. That is publicized to all of our vendors. And then as well, vendors can, is there one of the things that, may I finish?
Somebody.
Is there a way online to?
Maybe do it online or something.
So for the, I actually have that.
Ms. Davis, I can, Brian.
So for the temporary food permit, is what I'm assuming you're talking about, like a public event?
Because like the next day or two would have been the event.
So great question. So the opportunity to fill out that form and everything is online. It's also on the app now. Uh, but the thing to remember is, and I may be speaking a bit out of turn for our environmental team, but they do have a turnaround process there. So just if we, if someone comes in on a Friday, even if we were open, we, I don't think that our environmental team would be able to guarantee. That's why we usually try to have, and I think our environmental team does a really good job. even if we were open, we, I don't think that our environmental team would be able to guarantee, that's why we usually try to have, and I think our environmental team does a really good job of kind of having those relationships with the folks that we know are frequent flyers, the food trucks and things like that. We tend to get that information out there. The Monday through Thursday is really the key time to get that to them, so we have time to process it. Even if we were open on a Friday, our team may not have time to process that or go through the steps that we need to in order to hit you up by Saturday for an event. However, the ability to fill out the form, so let's say on a Friday, you remember, oh gosh, next Saturday, I'm gonna be at the Twin City Firecrackers, whatever. I can remember that a little bit. Thank you. Uh, yeah, you're somewhere. You can pull it up on the app, you can pull it up on the website, you can fill it out because it is downloadable PDF. You can fill that on your device, email it straight up to us. Our team will take care of it that week and you will be able to, I mean, I'm speaking out of turn a little bit on environmental. But, I mean, that's just the thing too, is the ability is there.
Can we make it that way so that?
It is the ability.
It is that way.
And it's, oh my God, it's Friday, not closed.
But I think that's true. I think that expectation's out of, out of question. I think if you, if you're coming in on Friday, one jump for the weekend, I think that expectation's out of the same day.
I don't know. We're closer Friday.
It doesn't really. I think that expectation.
Not with this, sir. I just wanted to reiterate that again, um, and going back as requested, we went, we did a survey of all the, uh, health departments within our metropolitan area, and I am very proud of the fact that the health department provides the most services at the most locations, and we are accessible to our community and have been working, yes, sir.
Uh, show me, show me.
Sorry, no, go ahead.
Show me healthy women and wise women.
So those are.
Put one on the board till we have.
She's gonna do that all.
I'm just gonna do that forever.
Is there acronyms in the app like that?
Well, there are, but they're all displayed. And it might be in your, um, one pager that I had in there too, but don't hope. So if it's not, I'm gonna be.
Those are programs for individuals to, uh, one of them is nutrition counseling, some of them are screening services that are provided to individuals to meet income in each department.
And WIC, I guess, we can actually kind of partially count WIC, because although we don't do the WIC program, it is at our office in Arnold, so.
I think two people might need a, they might need a birth or death certificate or something.
Uh, that actually is something else, Ms. Davis, that you can get online. Uh, if you go through our, Ms. Davis. It's hard for you to hear. Thank you. Um, so that is out, actually something else that you can get online, is that you can apply for a birth and death certificate online.
So you don't have to do that in person?
No. And it's on the app, as she just said. So it's good. Um, the one, oh, sorry, sir. I have one last thing as a, uh, request. Um, in going through, we've been meeting with our building architect and working out, uh, plans to try to, to decide what we're going to be doing with our new Hillsborough location, as well as going through and auditing our, our expenses and looking at our different locations. I'd like to make a recommendation that, uh, we bring, uh, or that we have our building committee review our expenses related to our brick and mortar locations, uh, and looking at whether or not moving forward, we are going to stay in several, multiple locations, or if we're going to consolidate into a single location. Um, and looking at the cost benefit of that, uh, we need to confirm with the architect what the full layout of the building is going to be. And in order to do that, we need to know if we're going to be having eighty-six full-time employees and clients in that particular area, or if it's going to be split between offices. Uh, but what I would like to do is to take that information, bring it back to our building committee, and then ask that they bring a recommendation to the board as to what, uh, the board's preference would be for us moving forward to make those, accomplish those plans.
Thank you. Business today, new business. Item is to act on a recommendation to adopt the by employee manual. Should have got a copy of that, but I know it's fairly long. Do you have any specific things about that? Okay.
The personnel committee, we, um, looked at the employee manual, and there are several things that are going to be changed. Part of the employee manual, um, really had things that needed to be in the operations. So, um, the team worked together to figure out what needed to be, could wear, and I have most of the things that were updated in the policy manual, if you want me to read you that.
They were marked, um, on the copy we got. It's one of the things if you have.
One of the main things, I guess, was removal of matters that don't concern employee, employer relationships, or those who, you're gonna be in a different, separate, very separate operations manual that's gonna be presented in July. The adoption of the foundational public health service model in place of the CDC's central services, so it's kind of old information. Updated work week and schedule of the current practice, implemented objective standards, retardness, requires the cemetery to report time spent on that to the possessions of pandemic in order to allot the money for this. Yeah, I guess where you're reading, you're reading from this?
I'm not in the meeting, and I'm just.
Oh, you got your notes, okay. Oh, updated the drug policy regarding medical cannabis, opioid, opioids. Some of them added in Juneteenth as a national holiday, a federal holiday. Pre-patriotary employment. So those were some of the things that they were in the packet, but we all received. If you have any questions, can I have you on?
It was just in doubt. How many pages did we go down to?
Was it ninety-something or eighty-eight?
Down to forty.
Yeah. More manageable employee.
I love the requirement added. You have to download it. You guys, you can joke, but I'm liking this. This is great. Let's keep this moment.
She's gonna come in next month with a QR code tattooed on.
Mascot.
Having that information with the board members feel comfortable approving that, or would you like to take some time to look at it first?
Want to do it first?
I'll second it.
Motion second.
Just seems to be a bit twisted, but it's like, uh, stuff that's already in the statutes and stuff, and you know.
That's not what we're doing. That is not what we're doing. We're looking at.
Okay.
Or well, it's on, uh, it's a version.
It was sent, um, late yesterday, late yesterday. Yeah, well, I don't know. I have it, so I do want to have it put, just so I can see it.
It was sent to you yesterday.
Just like it will send everybody else.
I'm sorry.
Once again, you're not prepared.
What? No.
We're prepared. We're prepared.
I got, I got the, uh, the, the little packet today, but I don't have that.
You say that every month. Or not the thing is like, because you're not prepared.
Do not have it. Do not.
I call it.
Yeah, I'll call the question.
Could you please let me look at it? I probably approve it without a problem, but I'm about to see it. Or how about even better, so can I have it in a hard copy?
Could you come prepared each month like the rest of the members? That's our job is to be prepared.
I did not. I need to have it in front of me.
Yeah, sure you do. It's your job to be prepared each month.
It's in the country. It's not.
Yes, and you say this every month. We need to call the vote.
I mean, I still need a copy of it before I need to check. Well, it's.
And I don't have it.
Say if you have a copy, if you want.
Where is that?
We would like to have another copy.
I need to check in this cabinet before discussing.
It was.
So should you just know.
You sent it yesterday.
Ms. Davis, we actually have a receipt for it being delivered. So, again, you, we get reader receipts and delivery receipts for all of the materials that go out to the board.
Yeah.
Received this. Then Ms. Davis, that is your personal responsibility as a board member to come prepared and be able to access the materials that are you required.
Maybe their emails are really a shock. We need to have it in front of us. One member to read. My, oh, we can start on the week next week. There's a, there's a, it's pretty soon I'd be in the meeting next month, and so if you have questions about it, I'd like to be able to answer them. So I'm happy to go through all of the changes that are in, uh, the summary, uh, so you understand what all is done, but if there are questions. I, I, I just need to have it in front of me today, just so I have.
We can.
For the record, for the record, this was sent out yesterday by Jennifer Pinkley at seventeen fifty-nine, almost six o'clock.
Oh, gee, yes.
Yesterday, to everybody.
And you said you had a red receipt.
I have a delivery receipt.
Now, that was.
And is it to both emails?
It was sent late yesterday.
Yes.
That's a different story.
Well, the agenda was sent out early.
But I, I got the agenda. I will throw that, and I saw it on the agenda.
It was sent out to the.
Mr. Deal, in response to your question, I do, I just want to express as an employee that it's extremely frustrating to not be able to move agency business forward because a single board member is not prepared. When four other board members.
When I, when I downloaded the Jen, when I downloaded the, uh, packet yesterday, the, uh, attachments were marbled. Like, they didn't fit, when I was looking on my phone. Try it sometime and see if that does it to you.
Sometimes you turn your phone like this and you can see it in your heart.
It's still, it's still, it was marble on the edges. Like you couldn't read it.
Ms. Davis, do you have a computer?
I can show it to you now before I leave, just to show you what it does.
I'm gonna call the question. I, I didn't see anything controversial.
Sorry.
Uh, in the revisions. I don't know how to shoot with anything that was done.
And I'm sure there's not, but I still need, I still need a copy to look at.
Well, yeah, we have an motion second.
Too many things that can happen to you.
So let's vote. If people don't feel comfortable, they can vote now. All in favor of approving the revisions, we say aye.
Aye.
No votes?
Aye. I haven't seen it.
Change a little, yes, aye. So that's, that passes for us. That's adopted. And could someone make sure? Okay, next item, NAPF Director's Recommendation to Align Personnel Compensation Year with the Fiscal Board Year. For whatever reason, the fiscal board year has always been, uh, January one, December thirty-one, uh, but the, uh, employee review and potential, uh, raises or compensation, uh, were always done in June, July. So the recommendation is to change the compensation year to January, December, correct?
Correct.
So, does that mean that, well, let's have a motion second, then we can talk about it.
Make a motion, we align the personnel compensation year with the board fiscal year.
I said it.
Okay. I, I just like to ask, so are, are we gonna do reviews and, uh, potential raises now or postpone those till December?
Part of the new handbook that you just adopted has evaluations be completed by December one.
Right.
So that you can then take raises to the board in the meeting in December, so that raises are effective January one. So you're talking about making raises effective January one of twenty-three instead of July one of twenty-three. But you won't be doing additional raises in July of twenty-three. You're moving those up six months. However, also note that part of the packet that you, or part of the handbook that you just approved did change the step structure a bit, so that, uh, it aligned the evaluation rubric with how many steps they get for a raise. So previously, you had a guarantee of at least COA, and you no longer have a guarantee of that, so that may actually offset some of that. Uh, that cost is gonna come six months prior to what you would have expected it, like this time last year.
Right.
But current raises.
Current raises.
Will be done now.
Correct.
And then.
And then again in.
And then we'll do the January. That way, that enables us to be able to budget for them, uh, to be able to, and then as well, to be able to bring it back into line. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, difficulties with having to have two different pay rates.
Right now, when we're doing the budget, we have to budget for half the year at one rate and half the year for.
I understand the reason for changing, so, but I, I just wasn't sure if we were gonna go ahead and do the traditional or historical ones now, and then again in December, January.
So it's just gonna move, so you're gonna end up, they'll go longer the second half of the year than they will.
Right, correct.
You know what I'm saying? So this, this year, they'll have one, have one, and then it'll be a full, it'll bounce out to the other year. So they'll, they'll be delaying getting another one all the way to the next year.
Okay. Yeah, now, it, it just seemed to me they were gonna do, there was gonna be a double cycle in there.
Be separate budget years.
You've already budgeted for, for a raise that happens July one of twenty-two.
Right.
Okay, so that one, we'll go ahead and move forward, and you're going to budget in December for a raise that will take place January one of twenty-three instead of your, consider July one of twenty-three.
Okay. And then that'll be for a full year instead.
True.
Got it. Any other questions? Discussion on that? Okay, so then motion second to. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And our last item is the NAPF recommendation that ethics ordinance. We have to do this every two years. Yeah, everything should have gotten passed with this.
I'm making a motion with, I'm making a motion with, I'm sorry. I made a motion, we adopt, yes, the sardines with two corrections. Three, three. But.
I made the two space.
This, there are certainly.
The sex line and the.
So, then we, we, they're, they're scribblers, it doesn't have any context, so it was more.
Right.
Was there?
This require. And so, uh, so we can approve these with, uh, the noted corrections.
So, so we're. We don't have in front of us, but the changes. The changes are, are that there were the two words, that there should have a space in between them. Does that change the.
They're just scribblers.
And again, we have to do this every year. Ethics, state ethics commission. So all in favor of approving.
Did you ask for that in discussion?
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's good. Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes.
It seems like this is already in, in the law, in the statutes. Why, why?
We, we have to, by statute, we have to pass our own resolution.
Our own resolution.
To just agree to statutes, why? Because the statute says that we have to.
The statute says we have to.
And where is that statute? It's referenced there in the resolution. Is it at the beginning there?
Yes.
It's five forty. Just remind everyone, I'll educate myself.
And there's some taste to this. All right, a, here are new other discussions. Through the, uh, let's see. Aye. So, yeah.
Making a motion to go into closed session, session six one zero point two two one. Sessions one. Section one, section three and section four, two.
Second.
Yes. Exactly what we discussed. It's discussed employee issue. It's right down here, gentlemen. This is a legal, it's right down here.
Section one.
It's gonna be talking about.
You can say what it is.
And we did, we did.
You said about three or four things, but are you gonna discuss?
We don't have to give specifics as to what these things are.
Why not be transparent? This people will see.
Because there are exemptions that are there for a reset. And, and I, and did you, did you, was someone ever the statements explain at work with such a word in our training?
I, that's what they. I just personally feel like it's a little hurt to let people know.
Your personal feeling.
What we are discussing, just so that they know, why we're going for a session. I know it's covered by all that, right?
Yeah.
But why can't we say this is an employee issue we wish to discuss and now that it's a meeting? Or this, this is why we're supposed to, or we're gonna talk about the litigation. Or whatever it is.
We, we don't, the whole purpose of having exemptions is because they are supposed to be able to be contained in closed session that the public doesn't know about because they're part of the strategy and the privilege of the privilege of the board and the attorneys. Again, I don't believe this. That's okay.
And I, in general, we can say what we're doing.
You can have feelings about them, and then there's a change what actually has to happen. Something is fair to people to not know in the subject, what you're.
Can we discuss?
Yeah, it's, that's not a war. I don't know why we have to do possible. Because we're not talking about open enough. Okay. So the motion and second going closed session.
Mr. Deal? Dr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Crater?
Yes.
Mr. Page? Ms. Davis?
Yes.
For any folks watching, we have to sign off. Closed session, but we will be back, we'll go back into closed session.